Call this June 27, 2022 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hazel Time, Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hair.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 13, 2022 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. In discussion on the reading of minutes, I will be abstaining on the reading of minutes because I missed this meeting unfortunately.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose?
I as well will be abstaining.
Mr. President, I will be abstaining as well.
Okay, there's three abstentions. We were not at the last meeting so it's kind of hard to vote on the minutes when if we don't know what the minutes really provide it. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the minutes?
Lamb.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Rose.
Abstain.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Abstain.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Motion passes four three.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and we have one more meeting prior to break, which will be July 11. And we have several items on the agenda and again, we'll have more items on the next meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Special legislation has a committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow, June 28 at 5:30 here at City Hall. And on the agenda for the meeting are two things. One is the government display of flags and deer management. Those two things are on the agenda. The meeting is here in the rotunda tomorrow at 5:30.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Water and utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing new to report.
Emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Next item we have is requests for council action. We have several for the Finance Committee, 22-142 codification update, 22-143 ARPA funding for law enforcement police department, 22-144 Medina TV contract with Main Street Medina, 22-145 amend chapter 145 historic preservation board member requirements, 22-146 economic development tracks transfer pickleback, 22-147 expenditure for railroad liability insurance, 22-148 amend ordinance 6122 cybersecurity liability insurance, 22-149 amend ordinance 19119 MCRC joint operating agreement, 22-150 expenditure of 15,000 KTS equipment parks department, 22-151 discussion at alternate South Prospect Street reconstruction, 22-152 bids job number 1025 West Smith reconstruction phase four, 22-153 then and now for wind throw construction emergency repairs, and 22-154 amend chapter 151904 regarding fireworks. Two items for special legislation, 22-155 adopt guidelines for flying flags on government property, and 22-156 amend code 50511 hunting prohibited deer abatement. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Friday night band concerts have been happening every Friday night at 8:30 PM. They'll continue through July as well as July 4th. Each one is 8:30 on the square and they are all weather permitting. If they are canceled because of the weather, we try to get it on the city website as well as the band website. Farmer's Market is back on the square each Saturday morning. And some square events coming up before our next council meeting are the twin Sizzler races on July 4th from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Armaco Opera Under the Stars, July 9th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on the square. And then Arts Week is July 11th through 15th from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM and from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. I'm sorry, that should be 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM and 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The fireworks are always on July 3rd in the city, the city fireworks. And July 4th is the parade that lines up Medina High School at 4 o'clock, steps off and proceeds down Spring Grove to Liberty and then Liberty around the square. Some questions have come up with the fireworks because the state of Ohio has lifted the restriction on the private, private use of fireworks by individuals. The city's intent, as is Brunswick's and Wadsworth's, is to continue to prohibit them because of the concentration of people and safety and this year in particular, the dry conditions. So our ordinance prohibits the use of fireworks in the city and will be enforced on July 4th. Public members interested in city meetings can check the website and provide your email to Kathy Patton, Council Clerk. Her email is kpatton@modinah.org and that way you'll be notified of all the meetings. If you want to attend certain ones or certain topics, you're welcome to. We hosted the city's first Juneteenth event on Sunday, June 19th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It was well attended and very positive comments were received. The event was planned with Medina Diversity Committee, Second Baptist Church and the city of Medina. The title sponsor was the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital. Westfield Insurance Foundation was a supporting sponsor and flag sponsors were Huntington National Bank, United Way of Summit County, Summit Medina County, and Suma Health. I'd also like to thank a number of the council members that were there for the event, Councilman Rose, Councilwoman Just Hazel Time, Councilman Denny Simpson, Councilwoman Reggie Hair, and Councilman Jim Shields for attending and helping. The Great Race was held in the city on June 21st on our square. It was sponsored by Hemmings Motor News, Hagerty Drivers Club, Reliance Carriers Incorporated, and Coker Tire. Our local sponsors included Huntington Bank, Lloyd's Towing and Service, Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital, 3M Car Brake and Friction, Sandrich Food Corp., Summit Racing, Busy Bee Automotive Repair Center, Homestead Insurance, Rad Air Complete Car Care, Perkins Classic Car, Medina Tax Services, and the Don Williams Garage. This was great exposure for our community, thanks to all the staff and the many, many volunteers. And we were just notified this afternoon, they had the banquet for the Great Race up in North Dakota last evening. And the drivers get to select the best lunch stop and best overnight stop and Medina was selected as the best lunch stop. And some of the drivers and participants that were there told me that most lunch stops, nobody comes out for. They stop and have lunch and they get back in their cars and leave. And in Medina, they were lined up along Waymouth Road when they came past 71, all the way into the square. And the square was literally packed as the video shows, both the park itself and then all the streets because the parking was restricted on the streets and the people enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Lieutenant Markham, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
We have a new attendee that will be attending some of the meetings for municipal reports and that's Mr. Toth and he's the LST Director. So, Mr. Toth?
Thank you, Mr. President. LST hired two part-time paramedics, which brings us to full staffing. Through May, total ambulance runs for the city of Medina was 1,382. Through May, for all three entities, total ambulance runs were 2,142. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make council and public aware of a recent property maintenance code enforcement action that the building department had to take against a vacant Kmart building located at 1105 North Court Street. Last Friday, June 17th, the building department had to condemn and post a building as an unsafe structure. Part of this process required us to put signage on the building and to lock up and secure the building to prevent unsafe entry. This had to be done due to excessive mold growth on the interior surface of the entire building. The area inside the building is contaminated and is not safe to breathe. A respirator would be required for anyone going inside the building. This came to our attention after a recent break-in. The building has been vacant for the past 10 and a half years. Kmart closed in December of 2011. There is currently an open court case against the out-of-state property owners for exterior maintenance violation. This case dates back to February of 2021, one year, four months. This is not typical. Several extensions were granted because the building owners had said they were close to signing a lease agreement with a new tenant and which would require a new building. This appears to be nothing but broken promises in a way to delay making the repairs. Estimated exterior and utility costs for the existing building exceeds $400,000. Last thing to share is that the shopping plaza is made up of three separate parcels. Kmart, which is the center parcel, is separate from the north and south swings and owned by an out-of-state company. The other two parcels, the north wing, Marshall Side, and the south wing, Mark Side, are both locally owned. In no way what is happening at the Kmart site affect the safety of the north and south swings. That ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to give an update on the construction of our bridge replacement on North Broadway. That section of Broadway just south of Union has been closed to allow that. On June 24th, we did install the culvert sections. So at this point going forward, we'd just be putting the road back together. We anticipate reopening the road by the end of July.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Wednesday, the Recreation Center hosted a touch of truck as part of our party in the park series. We had over 150 families signed up and over 400 attendees. So we're extremely grateful for the collaboration and assistance from Medina PD, Medina Fire, the entire service department was represented, Medina City Schools, Medina County Sheriff, and the National Guard for participating. A lot of the kids were really excited because we haven't done anything like this for quite a few years. So we're thankful for their assistance. The next party in the park is this Wednesday at Memorial Park. We're having a pool party, beach themed, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and registration can be found at medinarec.org or on the numerous ads on our Facebook page. July 3rd, the fireworks festival is going to be returning to the rec center. We are having tours. There will be a sale. We're having contests, a DJ the entire night, water balloons, games, chalk art, several food trucks, inflatables, a rock wall, and much more. That will start at 5:00 PM and run through the fireworks at 11:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, Planning Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions, we have one, a liquor permit not to object to the transfer of a C1, C2 permit from WJF Investment Corp. doing business as Medina Marathon 429 South Court Street to Shoreline Convenience LLC doing business as Medina Marathon 429 South Court Street.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion on the liquor permit? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have been given the opportunity to speak and any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meetings determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Crystal Madreleos. I reside at 3546 East Smith Road, Medina, 44256. So hello, City Council, and as the new Executive Director of Let's Make a Difference, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all for your support of our organization. At Let's Make a Difference, we strive to create programs and activities to support youth in our community by fostering positive social experiences that help them thrive. Our success relies heavily on supporters in the community such as yourselves. So thank you. I wanted to give a special shout out to Mayor Hamwell and Barb DeSor for their help as well as members of the Let's Make a Difference Board of Trustees, our President Joanne Wyler and Dave Burke-Bickler, who brought us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, Tammy?
I'm going to hit all the hot topics tonight. Tammy Kirby, 246 West Friendship Street. The first one is our deer issue. I just want to make a recommendation as a resident that we do both things we're talking about at the same time. The information, education avenue to try to deter people from feeding the deer and the other avenue of the lethal. The comment was the rural has about 10 deer per square mile. The city of Medina, which is not rural, we're up to about 60, I believe, they said. So that's a little out of control for the city itself. So my recommendation, like I said, is can we do both things at the same time? Do education, information to try to deter feeding and at the same time do lethal to get this down to a manageable amount. The second topic, another favorite of ours, the government waste supporters. I know we were up to about $90,000. We're probably over that now, just to support legal services for these lawsuits, for those folks that were the government waste supporter and save your court. So thank you for having the city pay $90,000 out the door. I think we've got four lawsuits done and I think there's one more to go. So that actually could increase in dollars. And that is just strictly money that went to supporting legal services. So thank you to those who were on the supporting side of the government waste, $90,000 out the door. And like I said, we got one more to go and the government waste is 0 for 4. They got four tick marks in their loss bucket. The next topic, new to our list, our wonderful hotel discussion that we had. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think 90 rooms, 90-plus rooms is considered a boutique hotel. I don't think the site selected is appropriate for this size of a building, or I should say for the scale of the project itself. And where is the economic justification for that spot for 90-plus rooms? And the last comment I want to make for the hotel is make sure we listen to the residents. A lot of folks know I come to the council meetings and the finance meetings and they've been telling me they're on board with me. They like the idea. Wrong location, wrong size. And our final comment, the Great Race, thank you for all the effort and work that was put into it and getting it here. I was able to attend it, had a good time, and thank you to everyone that participated and volunteered and put that thing together because that was a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address council? Okay, introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 12522, resolution 12622, ordinance 12722, ordinance 12822, ordinance 12922, ordinance 13022, and ordinance 13122.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ordinance 12522 and ordinance amending ordinance number 6022 passed March 28, 2022 relative to the agreement with Witcher Insurance for the city property and general liability insurance.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So in the former ordinance, we did not specifically parcel out the drones. We assumed they were covered under the property and general liability, the insurance, and then found out later they were not. There had to be a separate clause to add those. So this is a request to amend the original proposal by $2,163 to cover the two existing drones the police department has.
Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 12522 passes seven zero.
Resolution 12622, resolution amending resolution number 15321 passed September 13, 2021, Section 1 relative to small cities fiscal year 21, community development block grant CBG program.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause was being requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Dutton.
Thank you. These are some reallocations for 2021 CBG program. The total amount of the grant is $150,000. That doesn't change. What this does is allocates activity number three, which was previously $18,000 for machinery for lawn mowing program. It splits that $18,000 up to $2,450 for the lawn mowing program, but allocates $15,550 for enrichment activities for at-risk low-income children. That is due to requests from our community partners at Let's Make a Difference. So that'll be for activities such as field trips, swimming, onsite programming. And the emergency clause is requested, so those funds can be used this summer.
Any further discussion or comment on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Resolution 12622 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 12722, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids under award of contract to the successful bidder for the 2022-2023 equipment and asphalt general paving services program for the service department.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual general paving asphalt services program. Patrick and I were talking, we're hopeful we can resurface some of our asphalt streets after this winter, once we secure a contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Ordinance 12722 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 12822, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into task order number seven to the agreement with Delta Airport Consulting for professional services at Medina Municipal Airport, relative to the airport narrative report and ALP update.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, is this Mr. Patton?
Thank you. Delta Airport is our airport consultant. One of the steps that we need to satisfy for the FAA in order to get repaid for the purchase of property east of the airport is to complete an airport layout plan update. The scope of this, we'll address that. We'd like to note that 90% of this cost is anticipated to be paid through a federal grant by the FAA, 5% of the state grant through the ODOT Department of Aviation, so the city would be responsible for 5% of the total cost of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Ordinance 12822 passes seven zero.
Now, ordinance 12922, this ordinance has already been approved by council a while back and was inadvertently added to the agenda, so we don't have to go ahead and vote on this again. So this ordinance will be withdrawn from the agenda. We have ordinance 13022, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city of Medina, with the Medina City Development Corporation for the transfer of two parcels known as permanent parcel number 02819821387 and permanent parcel number 02819821391.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? I guess, Mr. Huber, you were working on this reimbursement agreement or do you have any, anything to add to it or do you want me to explain it or?
This agreement was drafted by the attorney who is representing the CIC. It outlines the terms for reimbursement to the city for the ground that is being transferred to the CIC. It's a long-term agreement outlining how that reimbursement will occur.
Correct. And I think this is going to make the city whole for the land that's being donated to the CIC. And the way the CIC is generating the funds to reimburse the city is through the lease payments that would be entered into with the developer of the project that's going to be located on the CIC parcel. So this will make sure that the city and the taxpayers receive full reimbursement for the land being donated to the CIC. Anybody have any questions on that? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 13022 passes seven zero.
Now, as we learned from the Finance Committee, we have one more item to add to the agenda. At this time, I entertain a motion to add ordinance number 13122.
I'll make a motion to add ordinance 131-22 to tonight's agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion on adding ordinance 13122 to the agenda? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to add ordinance 13122?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hair.
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Ordinance one thirty-one, twenty-two, and ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-one, twenty-two, passed March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, relative to the city's cybersecurity insurance through Jackson Deacon Insurance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hanwell?
So originally, in our liability or cyber insurance, they covered us for one million for a little over twenty thousand. I don't have the number right in front of me. And now they're offering us a second million for a little over eight thousand. I don't have the number here, John. I didn't get a copy of the ordinance.
Okay. Well, we have it here. It just got stuck under the window. Yes, it is, it looks like it was, from one million to two million, the increases the expenditure eight thousand three hundred and six dollars.
Right. And the emergency clause is because I need to sign that by tomorrow, because there's a limit as to how long the quote is good for. And then this will take us until April of next year, and then it'll expire with the rest of the general liability. And our hope is that if the premiums remain reasonable, that we'll maintain the two million dollar coverage, because it can be pretty devastating if a city or a government agency is attacked by cyberware.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on either the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirty-one, twenty-two, passes seven zero.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things. First of all, to the administration, the staff that helped with the Juneteenth celebration and the Great Race, you know, both went off. It was just great for the city, great for the participants to be able to enjoy themselves the way that they did in both events. The only other thing I want to talk about is some of the controversial issues in our national government that has happened, two Supreme Court rulings that happened within the last week or so. I know there's passionate people on both sides of both issues, and that can be healthy, you know, and to discuss that with your friends and your family, and even strangers at times if you're confronted. Debate is healthy, and like I said, there's passionate people on both sides of both issues. The only thing I ask is that when you do this, when you have these discussions, be kind to one another. You know, I hate to keep saying that, but you just have to be kind to one another. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
I'd like to wish everyone a safe and a happy Fourth of July, a safe and a happy Independence Day. Our country has made great strides in citizens' rights, and my hope for this country is that I and others can continue to make our own individual, independent, and personal decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Hazeltime?
I would never let you down.